It is 5:30 and we're going to call this regular city council meeting into order. And we're going to sound check. Carla, can you hear? I guess not.
Yes.
Okay, you can. Carla, I'm going to ask you questions. All right, because of the distance and the connection, we're going to let Sherri do the report tonight, or do you want to do it from there?
No, that's fine. Sherri can do it.
Okay, thank you. All right, so first thing I've done is Councilman Huckabee has agreed to do the pledge of allegiance, so if y'all will stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We have a full agenda tonight, lots of people here. We appreciate everybody in their attendance. I'm going to move some items, a couple items at the beginning of the round. We have a couple of items to, some proclamations. I want to read those proclamations, then we'll come down and have some opportunity for some photography, so if you'll kind of pay attention here for just a second. We have with us tonight Dean Parr, his wife Tracy isn't here yet, is she?
No.
She's not here yet, and Madeline Ashton Jacob Paisley, is that correct, and Pearson. We're here tonight recognizing Pearson and a particular issue that he deals with. The family contacted me a few weeks ago, and I want to read a proclamation, if you would, please. Whereas a congenital diaphragmatic hernia, CDH, is a birth defect that affects during fetal development, causing a hole in the infant's diaphragm, allowing organs to migrate through the hole and crowding the abdomen, and ultimately may cause the infant's lungs to be small and underdeveloped. And since the year 2000, an estimated 700,000 babies worldwide have been born with CDH. And 1,600 newborns are affected by a CDH in the United States every year, with only about half surviving past infancy. And CDH is a common, is as common as spina bifida, cystic fibrosis, but is often not well-known. And those with CDH often endure multiple surgeries and possible medical complications, which can include heart defects, pulmonary complications, gastric intestinal problems, developmental delays, and many require respiratory and medical or medicinal support for years. And raising awareness of this congenital defect will help bring about acceptance and support for those suffering with CDH and their families, and will lead to urgently needed research and medical advances. Now therefore, I adduct to being by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Steenfield, Texas, to hereby proclaim April 2019 to be congenital diaphragmatic hernia awareness month, and urge all citizens of the city of Steenfield to take recognition or cognizance of this event and participate faithfully as its observance. Why don't you go up here a little? A good-looking family here, as a particular suffering, so we all want to recognize that. I want to present this to you today as proclamation from the city of Steenfield. Do you want to say something? While I'm here also, I have another proclamation. Stop the Silence is on April the 11th at 5:30 downtown at the Plaza. It's happened every year for a while. And so I have a proclamation. Who's here from Stop the Silence tonight?
I'm Sherri.
Is part of that. Why don't you come up here? If you haven't been there before, be sure to go down there. There's lots of people, lots of things going on, a lot of good information. Are you involved this year?
Yes.
They had two groups last year involved. Let me read this proclamation. Whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week was established in 1981 by President Ronald Reagan, as part of an effort to bring attention and support to victims of crime, and is being observed this week, April 2nd to 8th, 2017, to recognize the more than 20 million victims of crime in the United States. And whereas in 1983, April was designated as National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and communities were asked, are asked and knowledgeable that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, nurturing environment. Whereas National Sex Assault Awareness Month was first nationally recognized in April 2001 as an effort to bring awareness about sexual assault and educate communities and individuals on prevention of sexual violence. And whereas the city of Steenfield and Eret County have dedicated individuals and organizations to work daily to encounter the problems, to provide resources to victims of violent crime, child abuse and neglect, and sexual assault. And whereas Stop the Silence has been created to combine awareness of these causes, therefore, now therefore, the city of Steenfield and Eret County urge all our citizens to join and dedicate their energies to these efforts. And this will be on April the 11th out here, and it'll be co-signed by both myself as mayor and Alfonso Campos as Eret County manager. So thank y'all for watching.
I'm Sylvia Zamora. I work with Cross Tambers Family Services. We're a victim service agency that provides help, help and healing for those victims of violent crimes such as sexual assault, domestic violence, and child abuse.
I'm Melissa Johnson. I'm with Meals on Wheels.
I'm Jessica Lilly with House of Commerce, Denver area.
I'm Vicky Gonzalez with Story of Nelson.
And I'm Shelby Cannon. I work at Pollock River Children's Advocacy Center.
Curious, everybody show up April 11th. There'll be lots of cards and materials there and to support this tour. Everybody looking this way. One, two, three. Again, and again. Thank you all very much. Okay. No, I haven't yet. Okay. Took a few things out of order for some people to come and get going. So next item on the agenda is Brian Tarpley. He is a pastor for the Christian Reform Church. Well, he's in vacation.
Will you pray with me?
Yes, sir.
God of mercy, God of grace, God of love, we come to you with hearts of Thanksgiving and gratitude. Thank you for this beautiful day that we gather tonight. Lord, I pray for these men and women as they gather together to do your will. We pray that you would strengthen them, give them wisdom and discernment. Lord, I pray that the proceedings tonight would be according to your ways, and that you would be honored and justified and shown to be good in all we do and all we think and all we say tonight. It's in the name of Jesus I pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. The Ministry Alliance has always done a good job of keeping us in their prayers. Matter of fact, y'all meet up here on, what day do they meet up here?
Coming up the 12th.
The 12th.
Is that right?
So I'm assuming you invite anybody who wants to come to that prayer session.
It's at the courthouse this time.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we'll get into the regular part of our agenda then. We'll go to item number five, Tourism and Visitors Bureau Committee. Carla Trussell's on the, online with us, and we're going to turn it over to... There you go. Citizens' general discussion. Anybody, I have a couple items here. If I can find them again. Anybody, there was an item, who was it that was? Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Why don't you post here and tell us who you are and give us some information.
Hi, my name's Jeff Cootis. I actually live in Gran Valley, Texas, and wanted to thank everyone for allowing me to address you this evening. I've actually developed a secure parcel box manufacturing company, and Dan Malone over at Superior Powder Coating, I've partnered with him. We do our manufacturing, or finished goods assembly manufacturing inside his facility. We've been working on this project for about a year and a half, and we're hoping to have some very dynamic growth upcoming for us here in this community. We've developed Nexus here in Steenfield, so that means 2 and 1/4% of the sales tax collected throughout the state of Texas for both sales that are sold to consumers directly or through online purchases, we're committed to bringing those revenues right back here to Steenfield. So if anyone has interest in stopping by to check us out and see what we're doing, or go to the local post office, they actually have a brochure for our products there. You may have to ask for it. But the name of the company is MB Sentinel Enterprises, and we've developed, once again, a secure parcel box.
Rest the name again?
MB for like mailbox.
Okay.
Sentinel, as in Sentinel. A vanity domain, go to boxgobbler.com. That's pretty easy to remember, and look forward to answering any questions that anyone may have.
Any questions? Thank you for coming down and presenting. Thank you for bringing your business, Steenfield, Texas.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Stacy, I'm on track now? All right, now we're on item number five, Tourism and Visitors Bureau. I apologize, we've got a long agenda. Been trying to move stuff around. It's commencing some people's schedules. Tourism and Visitors Bureau Committee, I'm going to turn it over to Sherri. I hope her make the report.
The Tourism and Visitors Committee met, and we dealt with several items. The first were some financial requests, the first of which was a request from the Highco State Cook-Off, and the recommendation was to deny that out of committee, or send that forward to the full council with a negative recommendation on that one. The Larry Joe Taylor Shuttle was the next request that came up. Martha Taylor said they wanted three designated hotel shuttles with an estimated expense of $2,500 per shuttle. Martha said she would commit one person per shuttle to record the number of passengers to and from the hotels, because the whole point of the hotel motel tax that we give out, are you here? And it is for heads and beds. And if you wanted to...
Do you have some additional information?
Sure.
May I? I don't know if you guys received this already, but I put together some more research this past week. I feel like you guys were shorthanded by me last time we met, so I did some different research. Hi, Carla. Thank you for hearing me out. Again, my name is Martha Taylor. I am with the Larry Joe Taylor Festival. Larry Joe and Sherri are my mother and father-in-law, married to Zach. We produce the event every year. I think this is the 18th year in Steenfield. It's our 31st year altogether. A couple weeks ago, I brought you guys some information about incorporating a shuttle that would only be designated for hotel guests that were going to and from the event. At that time, I had not met with Donnie Hill, who operates the Jesus Bus, the Free Shuttle. There's a lot of names for it, but he has put into motion about 12 to 15 years ago, a free shuttle for anyone wanting to go to and from the festival. And that's folks going to hotels, folks going to dorms and other homes. And that system has really taken off. That's grown from about two shuttles to, I believe, he says he rents 15 to 20 now. We were able to get him a sponsorship to help with his costs from Keg One. We donate money to his cost as well, and then he, of course, takes donations. But most of his staff are volunteers, and he works with other entities around town to get transportation. So last week, I don't know that I gave you guys that information, and this week I have a lot more to present to you, because I did meet with Donnie last week, and we spoke with him about the idea of integrating the shuttle system for the hotels into his current business that he has growing out there. At that point last year, he had, he told us that he made about 10 to 20 trips per day. And at that point, he had a minivan and a 12-passenger vehicle that he had borrowed to go to and from hotels in the festival. And so that's, I mean, if you guess, that's about 200 people per day, maybe a little more than that. My father-in-law also did his own research. He actually did a round trip from Melody Mountain Ranch, and he drove past all the hotels, and he said that took him 50 minutes. He said if there was a five-minute stop at each hotel, that would add another 50 minutes. So we're looking at an hour and a half to two hours on a round trip for one vehicle. That may or may not fluctuate depending on the amount of traffic getting in and out of the festival. Sometimes those lines get jammed up, and that can actually increase the time. So what I'm here today is to ask the council to consider an additional shuttle. We were, you guys were gracious enough to grant funding for one shuttle. Donnie and I spoke. He thinks that if we added two shuttles, that would allow the rotation of two vehicles in town per hour. And that would put a shuttle going to the hotels every hour, hopefully, you know, assuming that traffic would cooperate. And he's wanting to add, you know, the two shuttles into his current system and kind of take the lead on it. He's actually got a dispatch person that handles all the phone calls. The phone number is on our wristbands when you enter the event. We put it on our website, Facebook, newspapers, everywhere. So everyone's got the phone number to call the free rides when they need a ride to and from. We would also like to designate an area or a line for hotel pickup and drop-off only. We currently have a 100-foot tent, 100-foot by 20-foot tent, in our parking area that is designated just for Donnie's system. That thing has grown, and it's doing so well, and I think it's, we credit him for the reduction in DWIs and alcohol-related incidences out there. I did a little research on the current bookings. I believe we have 500 hotel rooms in Steenfield, 500. Currently, the Holiday Inn is sold out for Wednesday through Saturday of the event week. The Hampton Inn is sold out Friday and Saturday. They have 64 rooms. Holiday Inn has 82 rooms. Super Eight, they have 52 rooms, I believe. They have a few rooms left Friday and Saturday. La Quinta Inn is sold out. They've got 68 rooms. Motel Six has a couple rooms left on Thursday through Saturday. They have 50 rooms. And then we personally booked 50 rooms at the roadway inn for our staff and other folks that come in, and artists that need a place to stay. Of course, that's not all credited to us. I know there's some other events going on that week, the TSU rodeo. There's a couple of, I think there's a fashion show, a night at the races. There's some other things going on, so we're not suggesting that that's not, they're not all here for us. But those are folks that may end up using the shuttle. So today, I'm asking the council to consider an additional shuttle so that we could have two vehicles, and Donnie would be able to help us run that system a little more efficiently. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Ms. Taylor, do y'all charge for the ride, or is it just a service for the people who attend the concert?
It's a free service. That's the idea, is for folks to have an incentive to just not drive, you know, to take the shuttle. And we, they do make donations. Donnie said that they take a lot of donations, that a lot of that's used for blankets when we have cold nights, or water bottles, and snacks, and things like that for the passengers. So he does use that for, to add to his company.
Anybody else?
So Mr. Hill would be, you said he had two vehicles last year, so he would be, this would be in addition to the two vehicles he used last year for a total of four, or is it just the two vehicles?
He, what he has indicated to me is he would rather use those two additional vehicles to add to his current inventory of shuttles running all over town, and let these two vehicles be the ones that are designated for hotels only. So that would free up his two other vehicles for other trips.
Chief King, would you like to come up and comment about, about what they're asking for? How it affects the city of Steenfield?
We absolutely support this effort and this endeavor. Anything that allows patrons of the event options to enjoy the evening and then not have to worry about, you know, getting behind the wheel of a vehicle or anything like that. So any endeavor like this provides a safer alternative, and I think provides for a better experience for everybody.
And then the question's to Chief. Thanks, Jason.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
Mayor, I would suggest that this is exactly what those hotel funds are designated for, is put heads in beds. And this concert is a proven event, and it seems to do that. And I would, I would make the motion, if Sherri would not be offended, that we agree to the second van also, to help provide that service for the patrons out there.
I second that.
Sherri?
I actually will vote against that. We, the reason, to refresh your memory, there was some discussion about the budget at the time. These were some unanticipated expenses that had not been budgeted for, and we were trying to preserve some budget for any more reserves for any more unexpected events. And the proposal was to do the one so that they could actually take a census of how many people were riding, and whether it was effectively delivering lots of people to the hotels, because right now, we don't have that information. So, I don't know. Carla, did you have something you wanted to say?
Well, I know we discussed doing just one so that we could see how many people run, and then next year might be adding to it after we saw how many actually used it this year, kind of as a test run.
Monica, do you have a, go ahead. Go ahead, Carla. I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Well, I know that's just what we discussed during a trial run this year and seeing how it worked.
Monica, do you have the numbers? Remind us. While you're looking, I'm assuming, Randy, we have a motion, a second on the floor, I have to take that. So we'll go from there, and then we'll take this as a discussion, and then we'll go for the motion.
You're in the discussion period.
Okay.
While she's waiting, I would like to say, I think this is exactly the kind of event that we, I think this is exactly the kind of event that this is made to do. It sells out. There's probably nobody that, no single event that puts more heads in beds than this. And just looking comparatively to what we've given to other events, I don't think $5,000 is out of line for what this event does for us.
Thank you.
Can I ask the number of people involved in this event? I started to ask that a minute ago. Not how many people stay in hotels, but how many people does the event bring into town?
Well, we've got the actual event, we have about 60,000 last year. It's, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Martha.
You're welcome. Thank you, Carla.
I would add, though, to our consideration, the fact that some of this is done to promote tourism. One of the things we had discussed early on was, after two or three years, you wean that party off so that you can devote tourism funds to a new event or a new need. So I, and I really appreciate the Larry Joe Taylor concert, as you know. But it's also a very established event. I agree that this would be wonderful and helpful for, you know, probably minimizing any drunken driving incidents and that sort of thing. But at the same time, the hotels are already booked, and I don't know that that, having a ride to and from, is going to make a difference as far as whether they're going to stay in the hotel or not. And again, we don't have any census information on the riding. But, you know, those are, it's a huge event, and, you know.
Monica?
The undesignated grant funds were $39,504. We're taking out the $15,000 for the water and food, and then this $500, it would leave $22,400.
So it'd be $22,400 plus?
$500 if we added that additional, would take it down to $19,504.
Carla, are there other activities or schedules? Y'all, there's no more items. We promised we'd make sure we paid for whatever we did last year when we changed the fund. So is there anything out there that's anticipated?
But this doesn't...
I mean, Julie budgeted for the events we sponsored last year, and I don't know, so that would already be in the budget for any events we sponsored last year that are coming up.
Okay. Let me ask another question. Jeff, y'all have that software that can track the cell use. Would y'all commit to helping them with that, keeping that data for us? Okay. Any other discussion?
How long do those budget funds have to last? Is that till October? And we still have Mulla Fest coming up?
Short answer is yes.
But Mulla Fest is designated in there, right? It's not designated in there?
No, that is not designated in there. So the short answer is yes. Those would need to get us through September 30th.
Right.
And thus, after we get all the funding for Mulla Fest figured out, and see that there's still fund balance that you wanted to designate, we could.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions?
I just...
Yes, sir.
Last year, on the volleyball thing, you budgeted an amount of money that you did not use. The rest of that went back into the fund.
Yep.
And you anticipate similar action this year?
Yes, sir.
So I think that $20,000 is probably a little bit low.
What'd y'all put back in? $3,000 or something like that?
Or last year, yeah.
$4,000.
I think last year, though, you used $8,500 of the Tarptank thousand, like, request.
So I think the number's a little skewed. Just, I mean, it's the number, but...
You think the number's there, but there'd be more money switched for sale? It'd be higher than 19?
Yes.
Further discussion, comments? We'll proceed to vote. All in favor, I guess to make sure I might, why don't you restate the motion?
My motion was to approve two vans for the Larry Joe Taylor Shuttle service.
To the amount of?
To the amount of $5,000.
So that's the motion, that's what you second.
Can I move to amend the motion, that we only fund one van?
Don't I have to vote on the first one first?
Make your amendment motion.
Okay. I vote, and I have to get a second. I understand that, which might not. Anyway, I move that we amend the motion that's on the floor to return to just funding one van after $2,500.
Okay. So I have an amendment made by Sherri to amend the motion from $5,000 back to the $2,500 originally. Do I hear a second? Hearing nothing, no second, then the amendment fails. Fails for lack of second. So I'm going to go back to the original motion then?
Yes.
For $5,000 to approve for the Larry Joe Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign of opposed.
No.
Okay. Motion passes. We'll put $5,000 for them.
Thank you. We're so grateful.
Well, we appreciate what y'all do for Steenfield, Texas.
Thank you. And by the way, I don't know if you saw my photo, but we will put on these vans that it's supported by the city of Steenfield Tourism, or however you, however you guys want to do it. We'll make sure.
Why don't you get with Julie and work that out?
Happy to. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you, Carla.
Thank you, Martha.
Mr. Mayor, let me interrupt you.
Yes, sir.
I think you should ask if there is a motion on the Highco proposal.
Okay. Well, the motion was, the motion was to deny. Is there, does anybody have a recommendation?
I don't think there was a motion.
No, you're correct. We didn't ask.
From the committee that brought to us with no recommendation.
Recommendation, right.
Okay.
But just to ask if there is a motion.
Is there a motion on to consider the tax, the original Texas, Highco Texas State Cook-Off? Does anyone make a motion to approve that?
Do we make a motion because it came forward from committee to recommend not to approve that?
Well, that was the point, so I, but...
Don't have to have a motion.
Okay, all right. Item...
I'm sorry, I missed that, Mr. Mayor. Sorry.
Okay.
My apologies.
Consider Hotel Octopancy Tax Fund, the TAF volleyball tournament. Sherri?
Yeah, and then Jane, did you want to say anything about the tournament? Okay, well, there it is. We funded a tournament last year. It was a huge success, and the committee voted again to recommend to the council that the tournament be funded again this year, in the amount of $15,000. Is there a motion?
Is that your motion?
Or I can make a motion.
There you go.
All right, I move that we fund the tournament in the amount of $15,000.
Second.
A motion from Sherri, and second by, I'm going to take mark on that one. Any further discussion? You're going to proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign of opposed. Okay, motion passes. Jane, you got $15,000. Item six, consider approval of ordinance 2019-0... Well, she's corrected me three times tonight. Can you believe that? All right.
It will be '05, Jill.
Okay, it'll be '05 if we, if we pass the motion. All right.
And this was about making Steenfield a film-friendly...
Community.
Community. And then there's an ordinance that goes along with that, and some... Community. And then there's an ordinance that goes along with that and, and some regulations and stuff. Kind of exciting because it's, will bring more, uh, attention to our town.
Basically, if I remember right, this kind of establishes some guidelines for people to have the potential to do something in the city and, and some controls for the city on that.
As well, as well as for the people who are letting their property use it. So it's kind of a protection for both. So-
Do you make a motion for?
I move that we adopt the film-friendly ordinance, which we'll have a number when we're done.
'05.
She'll give you a number now.
'05? Is it '05? Okay. '05. Uh-
Second.
Sherry makes the motion and Alan seconded. Any further discussion?
I just ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, where, what do we use as a pattern here? Where, where did this information come from, Julie? Is this state-driven or?
Coming from the Office of the Covenor. Uh, over 130 communities in the State of Texas have these exact same ordinance. It's a template that they put out and basically all the cities do is just change your town to Steenville, Texas. So it's a very standard language.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Should we do vote?
I'd like to thank Julie for all her hard work on this. This is an honor for the St. Villas.
Anybody else? That delay is a little hard for me to keep up with. All right. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Same sign of opposed. Motion passes. Is that the end of your report, Sherry?
Yes, that's the end of my report.
Carla, you want to say anything else on your?
On your committee?
Okay. We move to item six, Plan Development Services. Jeremy?
Mr. Mayor, Members Council, the first item on, on this, this item on the agenda is, um, encroachment agreement for HS Development. Uh, as you will have in your packet, staff recommends approval of the encroachment agreement upon consideration of approval of the planned development zone district for HS Development. Um, that has been passed as of last meeting and part of that, we didn't bring it at that time because we're working through some, the legal, um, stuff with their attorney and our attorney, uh, to put this encroachment agreement together. But part of their development did include this encroachment agreement. Um, if you go to the next slide.
I got it.
Um, y'all have this in your, in your packet. A little bit different picture. I did add it for the agenda. A little different shot just from a couple of the questions I received about the layout of this. Um, but, um, you'll see that the, that the, in your packet, there's a hundred-foot right-of-way dedication that's required of Washington Street. Um, that was little known to the developer. The Washington Street currently is a 50-foot right-of-way, so we'd be asking for an additional 25 feet. Um, TechStop has no, uh, plans in the works to widen, um, Washington to a hundred-foot right-of-way. Uh, staff feels this is, this is a good compromise to allow development, uh, keep the parking numbers up, um, while allowing them. A couple of, um, items to note of other, other properties between here and on Washington that are in our right-of-way would be Sonic, um, uh, Chicken, Golden Chick, the school. All of those are within the 50-foot right-of-way. So this is not uncommon. This is not the only one that's in that hundred-foot right-of-way. So, staff recommends we approve the encroachment agreement, which will allow HS Development to, um, continue on with their plans and their construction of this property.
Any other question for Jeremy?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Number one, the, the agreement is a little bit vague and you and I discussed this, but even though it says McElhaney, McElhaney is not involved in the encroachment. It's only on the Washington right-of-way, correct?
That's right. And you'll see it better from this picture. Uh, you know, that, the dark black is actually the, the drive and the parking. And so you'll see there's an exit on the McElhaney, but the encroachment agreement doesn't even go to where McElhaney goes. It's, uh, it, there's two, three properties before it even gets to McElhaney. But the property, the staff report was that the property is bordered by McElhaney and, in this case, on the south side of that. So-
And there is a, a timeframe involved. It's, it's not indefinite, correct?
That's right.
There's a, I believe it's 35 years with the potential for a 15-year renewal.
That's right.
Which would, which could potentially, if TechStop comes forward at some point and says, "We want to widen that road," which you and I both know needs to happen, then that, that could be recovered at that point.
That's right. Yes, sir.
Is there any other termination clause in this besides the, the 35-year timeframe?
Uh, I don't think so. And I think, you know, the way that it's written is to ensure their, the investment in that property. I mean, there, it's a $22 million project. So, you know, for their investment, they, they need to have some kind of solid timeline. Um, and so that's why it's written the way it is.
Okay. Thank you. Mark?
Okay. So mine's a timeframe question as well. Um, it says in the warehouse statements that, that the developer would be, in the event that the right-of-way had to be reclaimed, that the developer would be, um, responsible to, to remove the, the parking to, to, but there's no timeframe associated with that. Should there be? Should it be within 90 days? 180 days? Or would the city just step in and i-if it had to be reclaimed, the city would just do it and charge?
Do you have any answer to that, Randy, besides we can add that to the agreement if they said-
We could add it to clear that up if you wanted to, but the basic answer, your basic question is, yeah, we'd just step in if they didn't do it. Is that your question?
Yes.
During, we'd step in and do it. We've got the authority to do that.
I saw that. So if they're not doing it in a timely fashion, the city would just do it and then charge them?
That's right.
Okay. That's what I understand.
Any other discussion, questions? I'm assuming we need a motion to not to pass the, to approve the encroachment agreement? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we, uh, enter into the encroachment agreement with HS Development.
Second.
Brandon makes the motion and Mark seconded it. Further discussion? You're going to proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Same sign of opposed?
No.
Okay, we have one no. Alan next. All right, motion passes. Thank you. Item two?
Um, this next item is to consider, uh, an agreement to extend water and sewer services beyond the city limits to 2285 East Washington, known as Twisted J. Per our ordinance, no residential development, and I'm reading the ordinance, um, development outside the corporate city limits would be allowed water or sewer service. Commercial or industrial customers will be considered on an individual basis upon approval of the city council of a formal contract, which is what you have in your packet tonight. Um, the customer must take both water and sewer service. No customer will be allowed to connect to water only or sewer only. Um, existing customers outside the city limits shall be charged 115% of the existing inside-the-city rates. Um, this particular project, as you can see, will become from Byron Street, um, and extend it out to Twisted J. They do have to extend it all the way across the property line per our ordinance. Um, so you kind of have the estimated, um, frontage that they're going to have to be running. Um, we have met with Mr. Cody Johnson. Uh, he has seen this agreement. He has agreed to these terms. Um, he's here. He can answer any questions and I'll be happy to answer any questions or, uh, I'll be happy to push Mr. Williams up here to help me if we need to. So-
Does the developer like to come and talk to us tonight?
Hello, I'm Cody Johnson. I own and run Twisted J. Is there any questions I can answer?
Any questions?
Well, I've got one for, I don't know if Mr. Johnson's right. I think I'd ask. Jeremy's probably-
Okay, well, wait. Anybody else have any question, Mr. Johnson?
I have a question for him or staff, one of the other.
Okay.
And I'm not sure which, but these lines will be installed at your expense, correct?
Yes, sir.
But they will be built to city specifications and inspected by city representatives to assure that they are because they then become part of our system to operate and maintain.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm basically paying for an asset that y'all are going to have from here on out.
That, that was what I thought was correct, but I wanted to make sure.
Unless you want to pay for it, then we'll, we'll let you do that, but.
I don't think it's going to get passed tonight.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. You want to, you want to have a question for Jeremy?
Yeah. So mine is, and then this is probably after main here tonight, but if you look at the, the map, Jeremy, going back to Byron Street, there's a, there's a 16-inch water main there. And I know by the comp plan, I think is where you got the 12-inch water line that he has to run across his property. Has there been any discussion about not sizing down there, but rather going, going up to the 16-inch that you have available?
Uh, it's a brief discussion, but I mean, what, from what we've seen, we didn't feel like it needed to be upsized, but I, I guess there's all, if there is a, a willingness or a want to from the council to, to make sure that we, you know, keep that 16-inch and, and keep extending it, we can. That will be on our, our part because we will pay for any of the upsize. And, and Mr. Williams is going to get technical probably with himself.
Okay, good. I was waiting for you to get technical.
No, I, I think it's certainly something we need to evaluate. There's a 16-inch there that, uh, like Mr. Allen said, the comp plan calls for a 12-inch, but certainly we should assess if a 16 is, is appropriate. Uh, your follow-up question is probably, does the city participate in the upsize agreement? And, uh, the ordinance requires that the city does. Uh, the good news is that while the line's being installed, the, uh, Mr. Fambro here may argue with me, but the, the labor to install the 12-inch and the 16-inch probably is not much different. And so that upsize cost is just the materials cost.
What is the materials cost? Is there any, has there, anybody looked into that?
So the materials cost will fluctuate, uh, based upon when it's ordered. And so what we'll do is, we'll, we'll get with, uh, Mr. Johnson's engineer will verify those cost estimates.
But there's no, like, ballpark figure of?
How much we're going to call it?
I, I would rather bring that to you after we have it signed and sealed. That way we can discuss the full amount.
Okay.
It's easier for you. I, I don't want to give you a wrong answer. Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Is there a motion? Sherry?
Well, I'd be happy to make the motion that we approve the water line extension agreement with Twisted J for sewer and water, as it's been presented.
Second.
Brandon makes the motion and Brandon seconded it. Further discussion?
With the upsize marker, as presented.
As presented here. I think that's something that we, I, I, I think we could make a change to that at a future date if we, if we wanted to. Because all he's going to pay for is the 12-inch line.
Correct.
Right. It doesn't have any impact on his cost.
On disagreement that we've got with him.
And, and I'll go out on a limb, probably to be wrong, but I would suggest that, that the difference in the, the pipe is probably within my, my purview to, to approve.
He knows that we've just done his evaluations. He can be wrong.
Oh, I can be wrong with the best of them, I promise.
He has several months to overcome.
That's right. He has eleven months to catch up. All right. So I have a motion on the floor to approve the agreement as presented by Mark and Brandon seconding. Further discussion? You're going to proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Same sign of opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Go on to Planning and Zoning Commission. Jeremy?
All right. The first item is, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission Report. I've been, uh, doing this, um, last few months, uh, just giving you guys kind of an update of the items that didn't take action, but that were, um, that take, took action maybe, but aren't coming to you guys. That way you guys are, kind of, uh, know what's coming on the horizon. The first one was to consider a plan for planned development district zoning classification for lots three and four, block 73, off of Alexander Road. The Alexander Town Homes is a proposed, uh, neighborhood of 54 attached, single-family dwellings divided into 15 different buildings. The town homes will be improved with several amenities that will be maintained by its HOA. These include landscaping for the entire development, stormwater collection area that will be planted with, with grass. Who's on the wrong one? I know, but this is a staff report. So I'm reviewing the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission. So there's no action item for this, as you guys know. So I'm not on the wrong one. Uh, the developers also intending to work with the city to, for a park district and attempt to con- construct a pedestrian path and bridge that will connect Alexander Town Homes to the Bosque River Trail, uh, to the city park. There are three different floor plans. The, the price will range anywhere from 185 to 220. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved the concept plan for this development. The developer will submit a detailed plan for approval of a development plan for the Planning and Zoning Commission and city council act on, on a further date. The other item that was, uh, that's just a report on the committee designed to look at the billboard policy met on March 25th of 2019. The committee gave staff direction to formulate a policy that would protect the aesthetics of the community as well as health, safety and welfare. Once the policy has been drafted, the committee will review and make recommendations to be submitted to Planning and Zoning Commission and city council. And that is the report for Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Jeremy. Item two?
All right. Uh, PD 2019-001, consider development plan for planned development zoning classification for Green Acres Edition, being lots two through 21, block nine, Green Acres Edition. The applicant has met the requirements of development plan for planned development. The concept plan was unanimously approved with modifications by Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll go over those modifications in a second. On February 14th, uh, for planned development, the development plan was unanimously recommended for full approval and to full council on March 20th. Um, you'll have some of the uses of a planned development. Um, uh, and I'll kind of go through some of these, uh, highlights for the planned development. As you guys may remember, uh, at one point, it went through planning zoning, um, came to you guys with a recommendation. This did get denied as a, as a rezone, as a, um, or as a replat. Um, what we've done is we've worked with the developers. I know, um, the mayor, Mr. Harrison, Mr. Huckabee were very, um, uh, very involved in trying to work with the property owners. We did bring some of the property owners, adjacent property owners in. Uh, really came to what we consult, what we can, some compromise on both sides. And so we came to you with a planned development, um, for these 20 lots. Um, as part of this 20 development, uh, this is, this is the original zoning. It's going to a planned development. Um, so part of the, the planned development will, um, replat widely into the middle of the development. It'll be a 40-foot right-of-way instead of a typical 50-foot right-of-way. They still will have 31 feet of roadway, which is our typical local road. You'll see at the very top of that, there's a 10-foot strip, um, that will be, um, that'll be an easement and, and it will eventually will, um, dedicate it over to the property owners for them to, um, upkeep in that process. Um, so going through some of these, um, restrictions, I will say for planned development, uh, the minimum area for minimum building for a single family is 1,500. These, uh, these, these potential houses will be 1,700 square feet minimum instead of the 1,500 feet. Uh, eight 12 roof pitch, which we don't have a requirement for that. That's something the developer has, uh, offered. Um, they are doing a 30-year shingles. We don't have any requirement for that. They will meet the landscaping requirement of 15% of the total land requirement. The parking regulations, uh, we asked for two-vehicle parking spaces. Um, they're going to have a minimum with two-car garage. The lot size is, is typically minimum lot size is 7,500 square feet. They will meet that. Uh, minimum lot width is 75 feet by the depth of 100 feet, both, uh, equal to our single family. Um, the minimum side yard setback is, um, seven feet on a quarter lot, 25. They're going to meet that as well. Um, minimum rear yard setbacks is 25 feet. They are doing the 25 feet and then the 10-foot easement onto the north, um, will be there. Uh, the minimum lot coverage is 40%. They're meeting that. The road standard to an adjacent road is 50 feet. Theirs is going to be 40 feet and then an additional, uh, 10-foot dedication to the north. Um, one of the items that came out as, um, I guess a modification to this is, and it was asked for by the developers or not, by the landowners, is that there would be a footer put on the north side of the property fence line. Um, and so the developer has agreed to do that. They're going to put a concrete footer on the, on the north side of that. On the south side, the, the, the fence will have a, a pedestrian gate. So that way, uh, there will be access. So that way those, uh, the properties on the south will be upkeep their property from the fence line all the way to the curb, which is per ordinance. Um, there was some discussion at the meeting, the last meeting where it was approved, talking about, um, some of the traffic flow, um, from an adjacent property owner. Um, a lot of that had to do with, with the speed humps and just the flow of traffic. What we've, uh, offered is that we would relook at, um, the traffic analysis that was done prior to the speed humps being put in. And we would look at to see if that still warranted those speed humps. Those speed humps were warranted, um, you know, in a prior, with a prior study. And we're going to see if they're still warrant and see if the traffic flow has changed. I know the last time that we looked at those, uh, the average speed is now 30, which before I think it was, you know, is pretty significant. So those devices are working. I think they're concerned about, a little bit about the flow of traffic. So we're going to examine that and see if there's anything that we can do or, um, on our side do. There was also some concern about drainage. Uh, I assured them that, you know, this property owner is not, uh, responsible for any previous drainage, but that they couldn't, um, incur any additional impact to this property. So through the plan review, through civil, uh, we will make sure that there's no additional impact on drainage. And, and there's even some, a pretty good chance that it's going to clean up some of that drainage in that area. Um, so with the development schedule, you have that in your packet. Um, February 2020 is when the, the finals punch list and completion of, uh, lots. And then the, the overall build-out will be dependent on the, the lots sold. Um, we're estimating March of 2022 for, for build-out. Um, let's see, let's see if I can make sure I'm in it. The applicant will pay the parkland fees in dedication, in lieu of the dedication of land. The applicant will pay the parkland fees in dedication, in lieu of the dedication of land, in the amount of $12,000. There won't be any ingress egress from Tab Street. That was a concern of staff and of course, per ordinance. So they will not be able to access their property via car on the backside of their property. Sidewalks will not be required with this development due to the, the compromise we have with the 40-foot dedication. But pretty overwhelmingly, the, the neighbors and the adjacent people in that neighborhood are not in favor of the sidewalk for this particular development anyway. So we have included that in this planned development and it's, it's been unanimously approved. So it seems to be a consensus that that, that has been a good thing. I've rambled a little bit. If you've got any questions, I know there's some pictures of the, of the houses. And if you know Dan and Amber Holmes, they, they put together a pretty good quality project. They're really good to work with as far as the development services standpoint. We, anytime we've ever had any issues, they've been quick to address those. And so there's some houses with their development. And Mr. Dan is here. Couture is here today. He can answer any questions. And if you have any further questions for me, I can answer those too. This is a public hearing.
I just wanted to start by saying, I appreciate the work you've done. You know, it's, it's, I saw you work through the process. Brandon, your help as well, I appreciate what y'all did. And the landowners around it and the developers as well. So thank you very much. All right, we're entering into a public hearing. You might like to speak in favor of the planned development. By impose the planned development. Does the developer like to come talk to us? Apparently not. Okay. So I'll close the public hearing then. We'll enter into a discussion then and consider approval of ordinance number...
06.
2019-06.
Before we do that, could I ask Jeremy one question?
Absolutely.
Since we've, we've got several of these planned developments that are coming down the pike here, Jeremy. The development schedule that's a part of this agreement, so to get to the punch list, that is pretty well set in stone. Is that correct?
Yes. If there's any variation from that, he should come and present. So every year, he's, with these planned developments until it's fully completed, he's responsible every year to come back and give an update. If there's any, you know, if they're not meeting the schedule or they're not going to have the build-out by 2022, he would come and, and, you know, basically amend that schedule. So that's the proposed schedule, but if there's any, it's not like there's a, you know, at this point, I don't think there'd be any major drawback if he came amended that schedule. I think some people would ask some questions on why, but, so he can come amend that schedule.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Allen?
Jeremy, can you go back to the, to the map that shows, there you go. That the street has been moved from the north side of this addition to the center. If our, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And that's the planned development that we're considering tonight?
That's right.
And that street is going to be, is that going to be named the Jeremy Allen Street?
You've been, you've been in my presentation trying to pitch for that. Now that I have a captive audience for that, you know, just so you know, I am pitching for the Jeremy Allen. Street, road, drive, isn't any of that to be appropriate?
It's basically yet to be named. Is that correct?
Right. We haven't worked through that. When we get some of the civil plans and we start, and we get to the point where we're going to, we'll make sure they name that on civil plans and we'll go through that process.
But none of these lots will have access to the north or the south off of, off of the right-of-way that is existing in Tab or the alleyway that's going to be on the north side. It will only have egress and ingress from the street itself.
Right.
Okay.
Anybody else? Do I hear a motion?
Is this the motion for the street to be named Jeremy Allen?
Uh, no, no, we're not doing that yet. We're going to let you do that. We'll bring it to later. Randy Thompson, maybe.
This was the option.
Sorry. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, this was the option also that didn't incur any cost to the city.
Correct.
Infrastructure, right?
Randy's smiling. He really wasn't named after him, I can tell. Mark, you going to make a motion?
I approve ordinance number 2019-0-...
06.
06, which is the creation of a planned development district for the Green Acres area.
Second.
Brandon seconds that. Further discussion? Hearing now proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign of opposed. There you go. All right. Item four, abandon the street.
Okay, so this item is very similar to what we just went through. And so this is the abandonment of Wiley Street, so it can be replatted. So it can be replatted as, through the middle of the development. So the old street, and I didn't do another picture. So the old street is, even with Wiley Street, it's going to be abandoned. And we will replat the street down the middle of the development. So this is an action that is needed from council to abandon a street.
Okay.
And that right-of-way will be shared between the property owners on the north and then the property owners in the new development?
Right. So what we, what typically happens with this, after we ban the right-of-way, we offer it to whoever owns the property to the south. And then we offer it to the property owners to the north. In this case, the developer will own the properties to the south and he's agreed to that 10-foot strip for the property owners to the north.
Okay. And he'll maintain it.
Huh?
And they maintain it.
That's right. And they maintain it. We didn't, we will not maintain that. And that'll be part of that, the deed restrictions. So that way it'll carry with the property.
That's a good, that's a good compromise you made. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion that we approve resolution number 2019-R07, initiating the abandonment of Wiley Street.
Same Mark. Brandon made a motion and Mark seconded it. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign of opposed. Motion passes. Item five.
All right. Consider a development plan for zoning classification for lot one and three, block 157, the city of, city addition to the city of Stevenville. The applicant has met the requirements of a development plan for planned development. The concept plan was unanimously approved and presented by Planning and Zoning Commission on February 14th. The unanimous vote of Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval for the planned development to full council March 20th. And so what you have here is the unanimous approval to bring this to full council for a vote. Going through a couple of the highlights like I did with the, the other property and all. So this is off of Tarleton and Floral. You'll see the, the property there. It's undeveloped. I guess it used to be the old feed store, a little bit before my time. But you'll see that the, the development that he's bringing in is single-family attached homes. They will, I know there was a newspaper article about these little, some of the design that's going with them. The zoning is downtown, our central business district. It allows for single-family and even some multifamily. So it's not uncharacteristic for this zoning or this type of use. So just kind of go through some of these. The central business district is intended to encourage the redevelopment of the downtown business area, which includes historic courthouse, all types of offices, retail businesses, and residences. So minimum area for a main building and single-family is 1,500. The smallest floor plan we have for this development is 1,656 square feet. There is no requirement of type of construction, but all, all buildings, planned development district shall have an exterior finish of glass, stone, stucco, brick, tile, concrete exterior. So it'll meet all of our zoning requirements of the primary materials used. Landscaping will have 15% landscaping. The park requirements, it does have a, a minimum requirement of two vehicles per, per property and they will have a minimum. The lot width will be, is a minimum of 75 feet in a single-family. This will have 75 feet wide plus 100-foot depth. So both those match a single-family unit. The minimum front yard setback is 25 feet in a single-family district. They will have a 35-foot setback. The minimum side yard setback is, is, on the corner lot is 25 feet. The side yard setback's seven. So the, on there, they will have a minimum of 10-feet side yard setback on the north and south side of the building, on the north floral and south side of the building. Fall, fronting on the north vine, I know this would be a little confusing. And a five-foot setback on the north side of that same building. So there will be a minimum of 17 feet separation between two buildings, fronting north floral. The minimum rear yard setback is 25 feet. The maximum lot coverage is 40 feet, 40%, and so they've matched those. The standard road is a 50-foot right-of-way. And so that road there, both of those roads were previously platted at 50 feet. So in front of you, you have a proposed development schedule that is depending on how the sales go, but they're estimating May 1st of 2020 for building. The applicant proposes to pay parkland fees in lieu of dedication land. The sidewalk requirement is in place with the, and they will build a sidewalk in front of this. Curb and gutter will be required per subdivision ordinance. Drainage will be addressed in the civil review and replat will be required for this property. The development does promote redevelopment of downtown. Both Tarleton and Floral Streets receive small amounts of traffic and estimate increase of traffic count. Should be minimal impact to traffic flow. Varied land uses are allowed in the central business district. The planned development housing should contribute to the overall district. I don't know if we had, I think I already showed you some of the pictures. But there are, you know, the, the one concern that came up was, we, we tracked it down. But on Green Street, at one point, I guess a couple of the property owners to the south been told that Green Sheet, Green Street was a platted street all the way to Vine. We have no record of that. Title company says they, they don't have a record of that. So we're not sure where that came from, but going back all the way to the 56 Kings map, there is no platted road on Green Street. And we have not been able to find where it has been platted as a, as a road through there. So staff is comfortable that there is no road there. We ran this through Randy. Randy's pretty comfortable with that. And he's, he's got a consensus with us on that too. So I can answer any questions. Mr. Malcolm Canute and Taylor Canute are both here. And they can answer any questions regarding the development as well.
I just, because I'm such a stickler for this. So back under the type of construction, you have it listed, exterior building materials should be limited to a maximum of 25, but in parentheses, you've got 90. What are we working with? 25%?
Yes, 25%. Not sure where the 90 came from. Sorry about that. I apologize.
Other questions? We'll enter into a public hearing then on case number PD 2019-003. Does anybody like to come and talk in favor of the, of the development? Do I have to do that, Mark? Don't come and talk to us about it? Just, I mean, you had a great presentation to me that day at lunch.
If anybody has any questions, I'll be there.
Oh, come on now. Okay, anybody, we'll close, anybody want to talk in opposition to the development? Hearing now will close the public hearing and proceed to item number six, which is approval of ordinance number 2019-0, oh, what?
07.
07, if we, if we actually get a motion here, right?
Can, I make a motion to consider approval of ordinance number 2019-007, planned development centers, city center townhomes.
Second. Brandon makes motion and Mark seconds it. Further discussion?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
For Mr. Allen. Have, have we had any input from citizens in that area, Mr. Allen, about, about the development and the planning of it, et cetera?
Oh, I mean, the, really the only two comments that I got was, was about the road and about where, what happened to that. And, you know, we have no record of it, so we're not sure, exactly sure where they had. We haven't been produced any documents that show there is a road. They were just told there was supposed to be a platted road through there. So that was really the only concern that we had from that. I think one other, the person who lived, one of the residents lives to the south, was concerned about it being a little tall and may block in some of the sun or something. But, you know, we can't regulate that particular issue, so.
And with the, basically the street on the east and the west, we're not landlocking any properties by not extending Green Street, correct?
That's right. So on the, so on the east side of that, I guess that'd be the east side. We do have Vine Street. They have access, the next street down, there's access for Vine that goes around. So we're not landlocking any, any properties, even the, what is that, 270 on Vine? It is not landlocking that, that particular resident. So he'll still have access. Similar to what he has now, there is no road there. So in theory, he's going around anyways, so.
Further questions, discussion?
Just discussion. I personally think this is a, a great project. I think anytime we get more people living downtown, as we try to revitalize our downtown area, it's important. And I think if you walked around the square and you talked to the business owners down there, they would welcome more people living within walking distance of that and how it ties into the trails and everything like that. So I think it's an exciting project.
You have a motion seconded on the floor. Proceed to vote. All in favor approving ordinance number 2019-0, there, 007, planned development cities, center townhomes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign of opposed. Motion passes. Item seven.
Applicant Tom Brooks is requesting a rezone of the property being lot one and part of two, block seven, track of the Oak Tree Edition four to the city of Stevenville, from multifamily residential district to neighborhood business district. On March 20th, sorry, you got on the right side. On March 20th, 2019, Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning of lot one and part of two, block seven, track of the Oak Tree Edition, from multifamily residential to neighborhood business district. The property does not align with a comprehensive plan, as you'll see from our future land use. It is multifamily. The current zoning is multifamily. There is, however, there is similar zoning adjacent to the southwest and east. The property is unusually shaped. There will be difficulties in developing the property due to the floodplain. The rezon will allow for reasonable use of the property. The developer will need to meet the subdivision requirements. The drainage and floodplain will be reviewed during the civil design. Current zoning, you have that. It is, it is multifamily. You can see the neighborhood business across, across the way, kind of on each side of that. Property is served by 12-inch city water main. The property is served by 12-inch sanitary sewer. Property is found in Lingaville, which is served by TexDOT. The existing, the property for which neighborhood business zoning is requested is bordered to the north-south, to the north and by single-family districts, to the west by adjacent single-family and with multifamily near to the west. Factors to consider, which is what staff did here in this situation, because it doesn't align with our comprehensive plan. But we should be looking to see if it lines with a comprehensive plan. Is it consistent with the plan? If not, have conditions changed or new information been offered? Support of the change, the surrounding zoning and land use, infrastructure impacts, size and location of the parcel. Is the land large enough and proper location for proposed use? Is the reasonable use of the property? Does the proposed change provide reasonable use? And in this case, that's one of the staff's suggestions, why it should be rezoned in this case. Not only do we have some neighborhood business around there, but because the property is unusually shaped, it'd be very hard to develop it as, as much more than this. So I think the rezon will be a good thing for this particular property. I can answer any questions for it. I know that one of the applicants, our applicant representative is here and can answer any additional questions that you may have. They are proposing to put in a store here, and so that's the proposed use.
Mr. Daxter, you going to come out and make a, talk to us about it?
Sure. I appreciate y'all's consideration on this. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
You may have any questions? Hearing now, I appreciate that very much. We'll open a public hearing on case number RZ 2019-001. Anyone want to come speak in favor of the development? The rezoning, I should say. Hearing now, anybody want to speak in opposition to it? Hearing now, we'll close the public hearing and proceed to item number eight. What should be, you want to discuss that with us and we'll get a motion?
Should just consider the approval, huh?
Yeah.
We need a motion. I'll make a motion. We consider approval of ordinance number 2019-0-08, rezon in block seven of the Oak Tree Edition four.
Brandon makes a motion. Mark makes seconds a motion. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing now proceed to vote. All in favor of approving ordinance number 2019-008, rezon of block seven, Oak Tree Edition four. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign of opposed. Motion passes. Item number nine. Thank you, sir.
Rezone 2019-002. Applicant Gregory Fletcher is requesting a rezon of the property being...
Hold on, Jeremy.
Let me see if I can fix it real quick.
Did it just fall through? Kind of like a volcano or something?
I would blame it on the last person that came up here, but I, that's me, so.
Well, when the auditor makes his presentation, well, then Mark is going to hold it for him, I think.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to start because I don't remember where I left off. But Mr. Gregory Fletcher is requesting a rezon of the property being lot 46, 47, 48, and 49, block 76, track of the city addition. block 76, track of the city addition to the city of Steevenville, from industrial to retail commercial. So the proposed use for this is a church. In our particular zoning ordinance, the church is the only district that a church is not allowed by, by right. And so that we've asked, or the applicant has asked to rezon to retail commercial district to have a church as its location. As you guys will know, it's the old Flamingo Bingo Hall off of 205. The current zoning is industrial. You'll see there's commercial across the way. More importantly, the future land use does call for this whole area to be commercial district. So it does align with our comprehensive plan. The property is served by a 6-inch city water main and a 6-inch sanitary sewer main. The property is fronting 205, which is served by the city. So the subject property is industrial. It's currently vacant to the north. It's industrial. The land use calls for it to be commercial. South is industrial in the, so the east and west, there is industrial. The land use is both, there's a single family to the, to the east and west. So there's a single family residence on each side. Factors considered, you have those. We went over those with the last case. The applicant, Mr. Gregory Fletcher, is here. Can answer any questions? And I can answer any questions that you may have as well.
Any questions for Jeremy or the developer? Mr.?
Jeremy, it appears to me that there is a 16-inch sewer line that cuts diagonally across this property. But that is a city line, so there will be an associated easement with that, correct?
That's right. Typically, it's a 16-foot easement, eight feet on each side. It's a prescribed easement if, you know, if, if it's not, if it's not platted or dedicated easement, there is a prescribed easement there. But this particular applicant is not looking to expand the building use. All they're gonna do is remodel it. So they're gonna rezon, do some remodeling inside. So the sewer line, it will, will remain unfazed in this particular case. They're not, you know, adding any development or not adding to the building.
Okay. And that, that was one of my questions. Were they gonna do anything that might encroach on that easement, but apparently not? So if they do, there'll be the permitting and inspection process to monitor that, correct?
Yeah, that's right. So if it, you know, five years down the road, hopefully the church is doing well and they need to expand. I mean, they would have to, you know, bring a survey and, and we would expand. We could look at the sewer line to make sure he's not expanding into that easement for that sewer line. So at this particular case, we don't have to worry about that.
And at that point, they would have the option to relocate that line on their property if they chose to do that to expand the building.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
I would just ask the neighbors. Did you have neighbor participation in this discussion?
I have not heard. We sent out the letters to all the surrounding property owners. We have not received any, any complaints or comments or positive or negative. I know that there was a Realtor, Mr. Dickerson, that was concerned about the church and if the church ever, you know, decided to add childcare, what that would do to some of the commercial property when it comes to alcohol sales. You know, the, the rule would be three hundred feet from, from this. And so there would be some factors there if, if somebody maybe wanted to build a restaurant, you know, to the southeast of that. But that would just be a, you know, consideration that would have to be from the, you know, the next property owner. That wouldn't be a consideration that we do with this rezon.
Good. Thank you.
Other questions?
Hearing now, we enter into a public hearing on case number RZ 2019-002. Anybody like to come and speak in favor of the rezoning request? Mr. Fletcher, would you like to come speak? Is he here?
I'm forward.
There you go. Sure you're gonna come say a prayer for us someday too, right? All right. Get with Mr. Alliance.
Appreciate your consideration. I'm Scott Fletcher, pastor live church, and we just want to put a church here. That's all we're considering.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anybody want to speak in opposition to the rezoning? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and proceed to item number 10. Consider approval of ordinance number 2019-0.
09.
09.
We approve this presentation, sir.
Second.
Mark makes the motion and Brandon seconds it. We approve ordinance number 200, 2019-0, or 009. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing now, proceed to vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Same sound of opposed. Motion passes. Item number 11, Jeremy.
Rezone 2019-003. Advocate Gary Lloyd is requesting a rezon of the property being lot 10, block one, track of King Edition, the city of Steevenville, from neighborhood business to retail commercial. You'll see that this case and the next case are very interrelated. They do, we do have, although they asked to be heard together, we do have to separate them because of the different owners. So you will see they're pretty interconnected with the development. There is a proposed restaurant that's looking at these, both of these properties and it's contingent upon the rezon. So you'll see that this property is, is zoned neighborhood business. The future land use calls for it to be neighborhood business as well. There is commercial across the way and it's, you know, planned for commercial across the way. There's also commercial to the west of this property for the future land use and the zoning map. There's actually even industrial across the way with Sonic, but we, I think we all know that's not an industrial property. So the property is currently zoned neighborhood business. It's, it's contiguous with some other commercial zoning. Staff is recommending that. The property is served by an eight-inch and a four-inch water, water main. The property is served by six and eight-inch sanitary sewer, both adjacent, depending on which way they're coming from. The property is fronting Washington, which is served by Tech Dot. You have the factors to consider when looking at rezoning. I can answer any questions you may have. I didn't see the applicant, but I could be, just so if you're looking at them. But I can answer any questions on the rezon.
Any questions for Jeremy? Hearing now, we enter into a public hearing on case number RZ 2019-003. Anybody wants to come and speak in favor of the rezoning? Hearing now, anybody that wants to speak in opposition to the rezoning? Hearing now, we'll close the public hearing and move on to item 12, which is to approve, consider approval of ordinance number 2019-010. Rezon of block one of the King Edition. Or here, motion?
I move to consider approval of ordinance number 2019-010, rezon in block one of the King Edition.
Second.
Brandon makes motion and Allen seconds it. Any, any more discussion? Proceed to vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Same sound of opposed. Motion passes. Item number 13, Jeremy.
Rezone 2019-004. Advocate Cam, I'll say Dr. Cam Ip, is requesting a rezon of the property being lot one and 1A, 2A, and part of 2B, block 129, track of the city, city addition to the city of Steevenville, from neighborhood business to retail commercial. Very similar case. You should have most of the, the facts and, and I can entertain any questions. Are I can elaborate more and go over those, those items again? But the future land use does call for it to be neighborhood business. However, there's commercial zoning adjacent to this.
Question for Jeremy.
Jeremy, this is not a replat request. It's just a rezon for the lots, correct?
That's right.
And to develop, potentially, they would need to come back and ask for a replat if that's how they choose to develop them, if they did simultaneously or however they want to develop them.
Not necessarily. State law allows for a replat of property if it's not more than four lots. There's no extension of water, roads, public utilities. We can do a replat administratively.
Okay.
So we'll look at that, you know, we'll make sure that it meets all the requirements for that replat to do it. And it's a short plat is what it's, what it's called.
Okay.
Mark, any questions?
Okay, we're entering into a public hearing on, on case number RZ 2019-004. Anybody want to come speak in favor of the rezoning? Want to come speak in opposition to rezoning? Hearing now, we'll close the public hearing then and proceed to item number 14, which is consider approval of ordinance number 2019-0, I'm assuming it's 11?
Yes, sir.
11.
I move that we adopt ordinance 2019-0-11, which is.
Ordinance motion, we have a second?
Second.
Brandon seconds it? Well, you're active tonight, Brandon. Any further discussion? Hearing now, proceed to vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Same sound of opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jeremy. You did a good job tonight. One of the cool things is, is obvious Steevenville's open for business. I appreciate you helping out. All right, Parks and Leisure Services Committee report, Sherri Zachary.
The Parks and Leisure Services Committee met and had several items on our agenda. The first one was the Studio 614 dance contract, which the committee supported the renewal, recommending to the full council that we renew that contract. Now, that will come up later as part of the agenda. We don't do that right now, do we?
No, we don't.
You can do it at any time. Do it now or later.
Anyway, and that's on our list of things to do. The other item that came up was the senior center HVAC needing replacement. And the, there's really not any question about that. So that got recommended out of committee to the full council to do that as well. And there was a low bid, I think, of $6,000 on that. So that's roughly will be the cost. And then there was a report on the rec hall air conditioning. We had set aside money in the budget to do the air conditioning, but during the committee meeting, the discussion developed that it seemed like there ought to be a more comprehensive plan about other items that needed to be taken care of at the rec center. And so that was, we requested that the staff come back to us with a further report on this. And then, would you like to talk to us about the set aside for the safe routes to school? Do what?
So at the last committee meeting, we discussed the joint proposal that we are working on applying for. That is a safe routes to school slash TA set aside program. It provides infrastructure projects, so mixed-use trails, sidewalks, ADA ramps, crosswalks, et cetera. And currently, we have three proposed projects that we are working to consider for that.
And these concern things like safe routes to school for kids that are walking, things like that.
Yes, they are required to be within two miles of a K through eight school. And all of our city limits are within two miles of a K through eight, so we're good.
Conveniently. And that was all of the business that was before the committee. And the action items that we need to take action on are to consider approval of a lease contract with Studio 614.
I consider approval of the lease contract with Studio 614.
Second.
Brandon makes motion. We approve item number two, which is the approval of the lease contract. And Mark seconds it. Any discussion?
I just wanted to make sure, because the contract wasn't in our agenda packet for tonight, but I looked it up, what came before the committee. There is a clause in there that says that either party can terminate it with 30 days and that will be in the contract. And that was my only question about it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, I have a motion to approve the lease contract with Studio 614. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Same sound of opposed. Motion passes. Your second item about the air conditioner, do we need to vote on that? Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
I move that we approve the expenditure of $6,000 to repair the HVAC unit at the senior citizens center.
Second.
Mark makes motion and Sherri seconds it. Any discussion? Proceed to vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Same sound of opposed. Okay.
And that concludes the Parks and Leisure Services Committee report.
Well, now you're up again for personnel.
I'm gonna get it loaded here. The Personnel Committee met and, did you want to talk about the problem we were having, Nick? Or I can talk about it either way. We, we've had a position out at the landfill that we've been trying to fill and there's been difficulty, to say the least, in, in getting qualified applicants. So the Personnel Committee met and, go ahead. This was presented that we.
You're doing so well.
Okay. It was presented that we changed the job description from a, I forget, does it go to supervisor to superintendent?
From, right, from supervisor to superintendent, but it's just a title change.
To superintendent with an additional increase in the compensation range, not necessarily what would actually end up being offered. And the committee voted that out to the full council for their approval.
And the funding of it would be through the load charge change?
And that's the Finance Committee coming up, yes. We kind of have it backwards, I guess. Well, I don't know. One of them has to come first.
The positioner of the money.
The positioner of the money.
They're, they're independent of each other. So the title change does not necessitate a change in salary.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. So we have a mo, we have a request to consider approval of landfill superintendent position to be changed, or to be changed to that position. Do we have a motion?
I move that we change the landfill title from, I'm gonna get it wrong again, supervisor to superintendent.
Second.
Sherri makes motion. Allen seconds it. Any further discussion? Proceed to vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Same sound of opposed. The motion passes. Finance Committee, Mr. McClinton.
That concludes the Finance Committee, yeah.
Finance Committee met on the 19th of March. Had two items on the agenda. One of them was to address what we just talked about in the Personnel Committee. But before we get to that, because they have been sitting over there so patiently, we also discussed and heard a presentation about, so I'm gonna go to the.
Okay.
Okay. Presentation from our auditing firm to look at our final financial, financial reports from the last fiscal year. And we had a new firm this year. I think it's important to, to have new eyes looking and really want to commend Monica and the entire staff for providing the information in a timely fashion so that we get the audit done in a timely fashion. And I want to invite Ms. Harris and Mr. Brooks to come up and whatever you think is pertinent for us to hear, go ahead and lay it on us.
Do we have a? There we go. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Mike Brooks. I order partner with Brooks Watson CPAs. In your packet, you have been provided a copy of the comprehensive annual financial report for the 2018 fiscal year. I have prepared a short summary presentation, which you have also been provided, I believe. They cover some of the more important numbers and statements within the report. So I'd be happy to go over that now and then open it up to questions.
Okay.
First, just briefly, I want to go over the audit process. The audit can be broken into three general phases. The first being the audit planning and risk assessment. This is typically completed during the mid-year. We'll come out, meet with city staff, evaluate the internal controls, sit down, talk to all the departments, and ultimately put together our preliminary audit plan. Sorry about that. Clicker's not working too great here. Next is the bulk of what we do. This is the audit field work. This is, we are looking at all of the material assets, liabilities, revenues, expenses. This is completed after year-end. The accumulation of any findings that we do have and ultimately the, the exit interview with council and, and city and the staff, excuse me. And the final is the preparation of the CAFR, presentation of, to that, to hear, to you tonight, excuse me. I'm gonna have to forego the clicker. It doesn't seem to be, it seem to be working. Okay, here we go. Next, I do want to point out that the city has issued a comprehensive annual financial report. This is as opposed to a standard annual financial report. There is a reason this report in front of you is 150 pages rather than 80. There's a lot of information within this report. And it is commendable that the city has put this information together. In addition to preparing this report, this report has traditionally been submitted to the GFOA to receive the certificate of excellence in financial, financial reporting. City has received this award for 30, over 30 consecutive years, I believe, and we fully anticipate that this, this report in front of you will also receive this award. Next, just briefly, I do want to go over the components of your comprehensive annual financial report. First, we have the letter of transmittal, followed by the auditor's opinion, followed by the management's discussion and analysis, then the basic financial statements, then followed by the required supplementary information, and finally. followed by the required supplementary information, and finally, the statistical section. Next is what we consider to be the most important statement within your comprehensive annual financial report. This is our independent auditor's report. This report can come in four possible outcomes, the best being an unmodified audit opinion, and the worst being an adverse audit opinion. We have issued a clean, unmodified audit opinion on the city's financials. This is the highest level of assurance that we can give that these financial statements are free of any material misstatement, and all footnotes are disclosed. Next, I want to touch on several financial highlights. As of the end of the year, total assets for the city exceeded total liabilities by approximately 76.6 million. The city's governmental funds reported combined ending fund balances of approximately 9.1 million. This was an increase of 308,000 over the prior year. Unassigned fund balance within your general fund was approximately 7.3 million, which equated to about 52% of your annual general fund expenditures. And overall, the city had an increase in net position of approximately 7.9 million. A lot of this was related to an employee benefit change related to the city's pension. Next is a summary of your governmental activities revenues. This excludes any of your proprietary funds, your water and sewer solid waste, so it is all your governmental funds, which includes your general fund. For the year, total revenues were approximately 15 million. This was an increase of 701,000 over the prior year. The three largest revenues being property taxes at 5.7 million, which increased 490,000, sales taxes at 5.6 million, which increased 380,000, and finally, franchise and other taxes, which totaled 1.6 million and increased about 38,000. Next is a summary of all of your governmental activities expenses for the year. Total expenses were about 15.4 million for the year, and this was a decrease of 710,000. Public safety expenses totaled 8.5 million, which decreased 299,000, followed by general government at 2.2 million, which was a decrease of 200,000. And culture and recreation expenses totaled 2.4 million, which also decreased 24,000. Next is a summary of your governmental changes in fund balance. This is your general fund and all of your governmental funds. What we typically look at within these funds are the net change in fund balance, did it increase or decrease for the year. You will see that the general fund had an increase in fund balance of approximately 159,000, and your total non-major governmental funds also increased about 150,000. The most important number that we normally look at is your ending fund balance for your general fund. The reason that is important is because the city wants to maintain an adequate unassigned fund balance reserve, and anything above 15% is generally considered a healthy fund balance reserve. The city currently has unassigned fund balance of 7.2 million, which equated to about 52% of your annual general fund expenditures, so certainly, a healthy fund balance reserve. Next is a budget to actual for the year for your general fund. On the right-hand side, you will see either a positive or negative budget variance. On the upper right, the city did receive a positive revenue variance of 347,000. This means the city did receive about $347,000 more than your final budget. Below that, the city had a positive expenditure variance of 722,000. This means the city did expend about $722,000 less than your final budget. That along with your other financing sources, the city had an overall positive budget variance of a little over $1 million this year. So, the city did budget for a deficit of 934,000, ended up with an increase in fund balance of 159,000, so the net of those two is where you get your overall positive revenue budget variance. So, assuming the city was able to accomplish everything you intended to, and had both positive revenue and expenditure variances, that was a sign of a healthy fiscal year. Next is a summary of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position for your proprietary funds. Proprietary funds are different from your governmental funds in that they are required to be self-supporting, so they should have rates that are set at a level that not only funds operations, but funds your capital outlay, as well as your debt service. So, what we'll typically look at within these funds are, are these funds losing money over time? Do they have recurring losses? So, you will see that the water and wastewater fund had an increase in your net position of approximately 2.2 million. Stormwater drainage had an increase of 68,000. There was a decrease in your airport of about 38,000, and an increase in your sanitary landfill of about 195,000. So, overall, we did not see any indicators of any issues with these funds. They all had healthy ending net positions, and other than the airport fund, all had increases this year in your net position, so no indication of any rate issues within these funds. So, that does conclude my presentation of the statements. In addition to the CAFR, we do have two additional reports that you have been provided, two additional letters, one being the required auditor disclosure letter. This gives us an opportunity to disclose any issues or other accounting statements that which have been implemented during the year. We did have two things that required a restatement this year, one being the implementation of GASB 75. If you were all familiar, a few years ago, the city had to implement GASB 68. This was related to the city's pension and resulted in a very large liability being booked. Generally, it was a large liability for most cities. So, that, GASB did, issue GASB 75, which is very similar to GASB 68, but it does apply to any benefit provided to retirees. The city does participate in the TMRS supplemental death benefit. It's a fixed benefit for your retirees and your current employees, but the retiree portion is what falls under this GASB, and this also required a liability to be booked. And that was presented retrospectively, so we did have to restate net position for that. Your other restatement was related to the inventory balance. Previously, this was not recorded on the city's books, and it was a significant balance, and this year, the city did implement an inventory management system. Previously, the city wasn't able to provide this information to the, or did not have this information available to be able to book this asset. So, had this not, had the city not purchased this inventory management system, put this in place, we would not have been able to book it this year also. In our opinion, this more than likely would have resulted in unmodified audit opinions. So, that table we went over earlier, which showed the modified and adverse, it would not have been the modified. So, unmodified, it would have been something in between, which is certainly not good for the city. So, we were glad to see that that was in place. And in addition, we did have several recommendations and findings that we discussed with management, just recommendations, internal control improvements, and things that we noted. They have all been observed and discussed with management at length, and I think the city was in agreement with most of them, but if the city did have any questions over the report or any of the letters, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for, on the report tonight? You look like you're getting ready.
No.
Okay. Anybody else? I just want to make a comment. Our net position on our enterprise fund is really there as part of, part of the issue there is, we don't have a long, long vision capital improvement plan, so that all that money will be used up quickly. You know, so I mean, it's good that we have that net position, but it's not necessarily that we're overcharging what you're saying.
Correct.
Okay. Next thing is, I want to thank Nick for jumping on that asset issue. You know, it was something that Monica brought up, and Nick got out there and did it real quickly, so I appreciate you doing that. It's really... Any questions for, on our audit tonight? I'll tell you, I happen to be married to a very good auditor, 40-something years' experience, and she has a good audit. She appreciates, and especially, she said, appreciate Monica and the work that you do and your staff. Anybody else? I guess we have to accept the report tonight?
Is that 40 years' experience with you, or 40 years of an auditor?
Let me see, what's, this is 2009, it'll be 45 years' experience with me.
Okay, just make sure we clarify.
I want to know how many people have been 45 years? Okay, we'll go ahead, we'll proceed to vote. Do I have a motion to approve the audit report?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the fiscal year 2017-2018 CAFR final report as it's been presented.
Second.
Mark makes a motion, and Alan seconds it. We approve the report as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passed. Thank you very much for your audit. I mean, Monica was very complimentary of the work that you did.
Yeah, and I also want to compliment Monica. They did a great job for us this year, so we really appreciate it. Her books are in great order. One thing I didn't touch on, and that I probably should have, is just, one of those letters that had been provided did include the journal entries that we proposed during the audit, and that letter can typically get pretty thick with quite a few pages of journal entries. I think we had four or five. Five, okay. And a lot of those were related to that new accounting standard that we talked about, the OPEV implementation, so those typically wouldn't be there in a normal year. So, that's a reflection on Monica and the accounting department, and how prepared they were, so we do appreciate it.
You're telling us what everybody up here knows about Monica. We appreciate her work and the hard work she does.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Continuing on with, and Mr. Brooks, thank you, and Monica, thank you. Excellent work. Continuing on with the Finance Committee report, we had a second item, which was to look at amending the fee schedule that's been adopted for the current fiscal year. There were two reasons behind that. One, we've already discussed in Personnel Committee, the recommendation was that in changing the supervisor to position, to a superintendent position, that what we need to be able to do was offer a little bit more money to try to find a qualified person to fill that position. Nick has not had the opportunity to do that, and he thinks that it is because of the salary that we're offering. So, to help offset that $10,000 increase, the recommendation came forward to change the minimum fee at the landfill from $20 to $25 per load, and that would, in fact, raise the $10,000 difference between the supervisor and superintendent position. The second fee that was recommended was to change the tonnage fee from, right now, the adopted fee schedule says $50 per ton, and that was suggested to go to $60 per ton. And the reason for that is that there are several expenditures that are going to be required at the landfill that we know are coming down the pike over the next one to seven years, and an outline was given of those. Some is specific maintenance and repair on specific equipment that's permit required. There is a, there's going to be construction and engineering costs associated with the development and construction of the cells four and five at the landfill. And then, there's also equip, or permitting and engineering work that's necessary to do an overfill on both the cells that we currently operate, one through four, and also for the currently closed section of the type one landfill. And this is to try to extend the life of the landfill, and the thinking was that, just like any other business owner or an operator would do, that we know these expenditures are coming down the pike over the next several years, and we're trying to get out in front of that. And raising the fees, the tonnage fees at the landfill allows us to put that money aside, so when those expenses come, we are prepared for it. We're not looking to go out and borrow money out at the landfill to do things that we know are coming. And I know since the, since our committee meeting, Mr. Williams has got some additional information, and I've invited him, I'd like to invite him to come and just, just so that everybody on the council and in the public knows exactly what's going on. This did come with a positive recommendation to change these two fees from the Finance Committee, and we will get to that, I'm sure.
Sure. Thank you, sir. You're right. On March 19th, I presented some information that I had about the city's 2006 D6 CAT dozer. At that time, we knew that the transmission had failed. We'd received some estimates for the replacement of that. I overestimated what I thought the refurbishment cost would be. We thought that the transmission was going to be about 70,000, and so I said, let's ask for 150,000 so that we can replace anything that needs to be replaced. It is a relatively new machine, as far as that kind of tractor goes. It's low hours, low number of miles. CAT, that following week, gave us an estimate to replace the entire powertrain, which is the recommended methodology here, and that cost was not 150,000, it was just under 215,000. Essentially, what that does is it replaces this tractor, it makes it a new machine with regards to the hydraulics and the powertrain itself. Now, what that means is, it'll be a new machine, with the exception of the paint, glass, seat, lights, all the aesthetic things that make the tractor attractive on the outside. But because it is such a new machine or young machine, we feel like this is the best value for moving forward. Glad to answer any questions on that.
Any questions?
We would consider it to be an emergency, and so therefore, I don't know if you need to vote on it or not. Certainly, I don't want to authorize it if anybody says no.
Just to follow up, I just, to make sure that this, the change in fee schedule that we're actually looking at here really is not specific for this machine. This is just one of the many expenses we know exists, and so, I think I'm going to make that as clear as possible, that this is just a piece of what we're trying to raise additional funds for.
Since it's an emergency, are we going, is there a way to deal with that tonight, Randy?
No, it's not, it's not on your agenda.
There's a methodology to do that.
There's a methodology.
Right, because it's an emergency, and it's required by permit, there is a bit exempt form that allows us to do that.
Okay.
But, given the cost, I certainly didn't want to proceed without at least bringing it forward to the council.
And so, this is additional information than what was presented at the committee meeting. I thought it was pertinent to bring it forward here tonight.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Williams. So, again, the Finance Committee did recommend these two changes to the fee schedule, and Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to that effect here tonight.
Mark makes a motion to approve ordinance 2019-12. Mark makes a motion, and Alan seconds it. Further discussion? All in favor, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Okay, motion passes. And I guess the question is, on the emergency, the answer is...
We'll put it on the 23rd agenda.
Okay, all right.
That concludes Finance Committee report.
Thank you, sir. Public Works, Alan Nix.
Thank you, Mayor. We also met at that marathon meeting that night.
And you kept blaming me for it.
And I did, because I felt like it was justified.
Okay.
Nevertheless, first thing that we discussed was, we had asked staff to solicit RFQs from engineering firms to develop a landfill master plan. After receiving these RFQs, staff had rated those, and SCS Engineers from Houston was the top-ranking firm in the solicited, in the received proposals that they had. We authorized staff to begin negotiations with SCS to provide the landfill master plan, which will work in conjunction with what Mr. McClintock was just talking about, the expansion and upgrade and extending the life of the landfill. It's my understanding that staff is in the process of negotiating with SCS for this proposal. When they have this proposal, which they hope to have back for the committee meetings on the 23rd, they will bring that for the committee's consideration at that time, and then we'll see what the proposal is and be able to consider it and make a recommendation to the council. There was no action required on that at this time. The next item on our agenda was the funding for the Graham Avenue, and that does not roll off my tongue very well, Avenue project that TechStop is going to undertake. This was also something that the committee discussed at length, because the Graham project that TechStop is about to undertake will completely repave and replace the curb and gutter as necessary in Graham Street from the South Loop to north of 108. We have a significant amount of aging infrastructure under this street, and the issue has become funding for this project, because there's not sufficient reserves in the water wastewater fund at this time to fund that. One of the options that became available to us was to go through the State Infrastructure Bank and make application for, excuse me, for a loan for the funding to do this, and Mr. Williams has been in contact with numerous people, and the estimate at this time is approximately $2 million for the city's part of this. One of the significant portions of this is the fact that with TechStop redoing the paving on the surface, it eliminates the necessity for the... on the surface, it eliminates the necessity for the city to redo that, and by coordinating with TechDOT, they will help us with some of the necessary engineering, environmental studies, and some things like that that would be necessary if we were doing it on our own in addition to paying for the paving, which is estimated to exceed a million dollars. So we're getting a significant portion of the overall project paid for by TechDOT, and it was the recommendation of the committee. And I would make the recommendation that we authorize staff to proceed with the application process for the loan through SIB. And I, probably as a footnote, this does not obligate the council to use that mechanism that it will make it available to us should we elect to do that at the appropriate time.
Any discussion? Questions for Allen or Nick? Everything that Nick does is expensive. Don't take a person. Looks like you have something to say.
I just want to kind of reiterate something that was brought up at the meeting, and to me, I consider this application process for a loan as Plan C, and I hope that we are still pursuing some other opportunities for funding, or we still...
Every one of them.
Okay.
Okay. Randy, you look like you were going to say something.
Was that a motion, or?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. He said recommendation, but I took it as a motion.
Well, we had officially numbered it, everything, but yeah. Is there any other questions? You're making a motion to approve ordinance number...
Resolution.
Resolution number 2019R...
08.
08, authorizing filing of an application for financial assistance. Any further discussion? So Allen made the motion, right? Mark made second?
Yep.
Mark made second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign of opposed. Motion passes. Mr. Pendleton is here, making the public, Public Safety Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been brought before the council numerous times regarding implementation of municipal court due to just the piece here at County Law on providing that service as of October 1, 2019. City staffs weren't very diligent in attempting to set that up for us, and I think at the last meeting, we were able to really get definite on what we need to get that process going. The committee was given, of course, some numbers as far as cost for judge, clerk, administrator, of course, in-code system that's needed, or software systems needed for that court as well. And so I know we're making steps in the right direction, and it'll be continuing, a work in progress, but we'll get there. But for now, what the council, the committee made a recommendation for was to recommend full council implementation of a municipal court. So at this time, I'll make a motion that we implement a municipal court for the city of Steenville.
Second. Sorry?
Second.
Second. So Brady makes motion, Sherry seconds it. Any discussion? Here now, proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign of opposed. Motion passes. Did you hear your report?
That'll be in my report.
In my report. Planning and development, Mr. Huckabee.
All right, I'll be short and sweet, because I was...
Oh, really?
And I was, I was...
Don't dance, Jeff. Don't dance.
This was like nine o'clock that night, but we had a committee meeting, we met on the 19th of March. We discussed the project that has been ongoing for about two or three months, myself, Mr. Allen, Mr. Sanford, the mayor's been involved in some of it, have met with developers and landowners throughout the city to work on planning, planning and development. You've heard that a lot today, getting a plan in place, a capital improvement plan, land plan, infrastructure plan. And we wanted to have our citizens involved. We've asked for people to come forward, and you can still come forward, reach out to any of us, and we'd love to talk to you. But there's really nothing besides, there are some areas that we've kind of targeted, they're listed, they're in no specific order of importance, I'll note that, so if we don't get phone calls that you're at the bottom, if you will. But we did, you know, work to identify some key projects that might lead to the strategic growth of Steenville, things that are needed, so we're not sitting up here in an emergency situation or in a bind of a situation. So we're going to continue to work with that and pare that down and try to focus in on a couple of hotspot areas that we can bring back in more detail to the council. But that night, we just wanted to kind of lay that out there and kind of show what we've been doing. So it's an exciting time in Steenville. I think those planning and zoning and planning and development things will continue to be busy, but we're, again, we're just working to try to plan for the future of Steenville. So, and that is the end of my committee.
I want to say thanks to Jeff, to Jeremy, who did a good job with that, paid employees though. Brandon, volunteer work, he did a great job with this. I appreciate the hard work he put into this, it took a lot of time. You guys are getting paid for it, you know. Brandon, Brandon is a freebie, so I appreciate the hard work you did. I mean, the three of y'all works are great with the committee. I've heard lots of good stuff from people in town that talked to me and said they really appreciate the open-for-business concept. And what I heard was, from one person was, I'm finally being asked what I think, and I appreciate y'all doing that, I really do. Thank you for the plan. Does any of your report? Okay. Monica, monthly budget report. Call you back up.
Mayor, Council, this is our monthly budget report for the period ending February 28th. We are five months into our fiscal year, so our target is about 42%. For our property tax, we received $141,000 in property taxes in February. We resulted in $311,000 or 5.62% increase over the funds collected through February last year. We've got our bulk of our money now, and the rest of it will be downhill from here on out. For sales tax, we received $600,000 in sales tax, which is $152,000 over our target budget through February. We received $205,000 or 7.97% more than funds received through February of last year. We received $136,000 in our hotel occupancy tax revenue through February, which is an 18% over our $115,000 that we received last year. And we spent $117,000 in hotel occupancy tax through February last year as compared to 129, I mean, this year, as compared to the $129,000 last year. The target budget for our operating revenue is 10.6 million. We received 13.6 million in revenue through February, which is 3 million over our budget, and this is because of our property taxes, which were due by January 1st and delinquent if they weren't paid by the 31st. The target budget for our operating expenditures is 8.4 million. We've expanded 7.6 million through February, which is 822,000 under our budget. The operating revenue received last year was 12.9 million. The current year was 13.7 million, which is a 766,000 increase, which is because of our property taxes, sales taxes, and our investment interest. The operating expenditures last year were 7.4 million. The current year was 7.6 million, which is $177,000 in dollar increase. The additional expenditures this year included our balance scorecard training, our salary survey, the special election, outside professional fees, maintenance. We did issue child safety grants this year that we did not in previous years, wages and advertising in the hot fund, and wages in economic development programs in SEDA. For our new programs, the purchase orders have been issued for the equipment for the four police Tahos and for the engineering for the Lennox Dodge and Fairfax Utility Improvement CDBG project. Any question?
I told you I'd never do this to you, and I'm not going to lie to you. About how much of the investment, that increase is investment money, about?
Compared to last year?
Yes, ma'am. Give me over the hand if you don't.
No, it's in here. So, about $238,000.
Okay. Interest rates will continue to go up, so that ought to go up as well.
Right. Now, one thing to keep in mind on that is, one of the reasons why we're getting really good interest is, when we took out the east side sewer, we're getting about $30,000 or so a month interest on that escrow account. But, I mean, yes, we have gone up, so it's a good thing.
Any other questions for Monica? I assume we have to make a vote on passing the...
We don't have to accept it.
We don't have to, we just accept it, all right. Thank you, Monica. All right. No dancing. Your boss is here, she's watching.
Yeah, she's already warned me, too.
I asked her to.
However, in executive session, there will be an interpretive dance of all the projects, so keep in mind that's coming up. The, thank you, guys, for allowing me a few moments here, and two hours into this, I was wondering if anybody brought dinner or breakfast for that matter.
Jake's open till midnight.
Yep, okay, fair enough. Wanted to go over a few projects, a few things going on, and some things that we are bringing back to the table for you guys to know as an update. I look forward to going into executive session, talking about a number of projects. That's the fun part, and it also kind of adds to what Monica just gave in some of the numbers that you see, and it'll continue to be reflected in a very positive light as we move forward. First of all, I want to talk about the UAS, or the unmanned aerial or aircraft systems. We talked about that a number of months ago. We haven't approached that subject in a while. It's been a few months when Mr. Barnes, Mr. Allen, myself, and Kenny Weldon went to the COG, North Central Texas Council of Governments, and we were really initially wanting to talk about the possibility of a piloting program and some other things to find out from their aviation standpoint what that might entail. It turns out, I began attending some of the meetings as our representative, our local representative, I'm now on the advisory board or something, I'm not sure what we call ourselves. But what we tried to do, and when we starting all this, is we kind of realized we were sort of on step 10 or 11, and we were meeting with also the manned pilot industry and realized that we better back this off a little bit when you're dealing with people that are, you know, at Dallas, or DFW, or Alliance Airport, or other places, or in the security world and other things. You know, you start talking about drones and other kinds of aircraft such as that, and we realized that from a regulated standpoint, it's not on step 10. We needed to go back, and so we developed four different committees, subcommittees rather, legislation, integration, and then I serve on two, education and public awareness and training. And we've had discussions with our local school system, as well as Ranger College in Tarleton, about potential roles in curriculum development in these different areas. There's already been a lot of movement from both of the, or from all of those entities, particularly at the higher education level, on curriculum development, on something that may go forward in different areas. Right now, there are more than 1.3 million drones commercially that were registered in the last year. And when we were talking about piloting from an initial standpoint, as we look at developing an industry cluster around this, which is very possible because of the growth of the industry, it's not just going to be in the pilot range, it's also going to be in things such as technology and a number of other areas that, you know, behind the scenes, if you will, not just in the pilot piece, which I think allows us to have an opportunity for job education and future jobs growth here in Steenville. Right now, they could range anywhere from military use to domestic security, surveying, photography, search and rescue, and a lot of other areas that we're following. So a lot of excitement going on there. From an economic development toolkit standpoint, as you know, when we got here, we've all been talking a little bit about the kinds of things that we need in our toolkit to be able to compete. We compete with not only cities across Texas, but also across the country for many of these jobs. And a lot of these folks have a significant war chest, even though SEDA was created three years ago, as you know, we don't have a significant war chest, and some of those things we have already earmarked for various projects. But as we continue to grow, and these numbers continue to grow, that'll help us down the road. But it's not just the cash that we need, we also need other tools to use to be able to help in the recruitment of some of these. So far, we've been able to create deals, as you guys know, based on future gains, we've been able to do some deals on creating tourist districts, which will help us. We've also began to facilitate historic tax credits for qualified property owners, and we're currently working with two developers on potential use of new markets tax credits. For those that don't know, it's just another tool, it's an investment for real estate projects, community facilities, and operating businesses. They're federal income tax credits used to encourage private investment in low-income communities around the country. It's, don't take that as a negative when we say low income, it's actually a helpful thing to be able to encourage development, and again, two that you are well aware of are looking into the possibility of it. We facilitated some meetings so they can look and see if that's a possibility for them. The best part of all these is that they have zero negative impact on our existing taxpayer. I don't believe we're done yet. Actually, we are looking at other avenues, we're looking at all populations across the economic development field, both local and outside of our area, to see if there's some other opportunities to assist those folks, again, without putting a burden on our existing taxpayer, which I think is going to be important. You know, one of the things, Mayor, that you've said and the council has said, is that we need to grow our way out of issues and not so much tax our way out, and so we're going to hold to that, and we're trying to find ways that we can increase our sales and ad valorem taxes. I'll hit that in just a moment. A quick thing on grant writing, we've dipped our toes a little bit into various grants, and at your request as well, there is a grant to writing workshop this Thursday, April 4th, in Abilene. It's put on by the Texas Midwest Community Network. They held a regional meeting here recently, and it was hosted by our tourism department in Julie Smith. It was a very good effort to get folks to come into our area, and we're going to pay them back a little bit and go and take advantage of one of their courses so we can get even more primed for future grants. Entrepreneurs of E-Rath, we've talked about that a number of times, that's coming up immediately, this weekend is the start of some of those things, although the start is begun months ago, weeks ago for sure, by some of the people, businesses that are trying to get some help and some, to kind of show off some of their ideas across the network here, especially at Tarleton. SEDA will be involved, I think both Ashley and I are judging this Friday. We also have other people within our SEDA network that are going to be a part of that on the 5th. It's the 5th, 6th, and 12th is awards, is that correct? Okay, so we'll be involved with that. It's kind of exciting to see young entrepreneurs get excited. One of the things when we got here a few months ago is we talked about that. We talked about how we can, again, as you look at, if you look at all the pathways for economic development, entrepreneurship is one that we haven't done a lot with other than this particular event. So we need to find a pathway for those folks to be able to get into the workforce and create new jobs and create new opportunities for us here locally. Lastly, and this is really more for our citizens other than the council, by the way, I didn't say this, it was on this day in 1978 that Dallas, remember the TV show Dallas? It premiered on this day, in case anybody was interested. Yeah, I figured, I know, Allen, you're good. Also, for all you millennials, in 1998, Rob Pelatus, anybody know that name? Rob Pelatus, Pelatus? Anybody know that? No? That was one of the members of Milli Vanilli, y'all remember Milli Vanilli? He died in a hotel room in Frankfurt, Germany, although there was some speculation that he might have faked it. Okay, back to this, whenever we looked at this for our citizens, when I came on board, we started talking a little bit about primary job creation. Stop it.
I wasn't laughing at your jokes.
It's not a joke, it was true. Exactly. No, I just wanted, this again for us is, we started with primary job creation, I think that's something very important. Everybody knows when SEDA was kind of, when we kind of got going, it was about primary jobs, and we talked about that, how we can get more of those high-wage-earning jobs, and I think that's still a very important part. But as we started looking at this, we realized, and you guys are well aware, all the numbers of jobs that were already existing in our community, the primary job area, in that arena. And so we started dipping our toes a little bit into workforce development, and so through that, we created a pipeline for existing manufacturers to hire available workers from outside of our area. We're already seeing some results of that. And if you ask some of our other workforce partners, you'll see that there are jobs being created on a daily basis here in the primary job industry, or arena. To address the city's need for additional resources, and to follow, again, what we said earlier about growing our way rather than taxing our way out, we ventured heavily into the retail and commercial development part, some of that we'll be able to talk about a little bit later. But this, of course, is for the capture of new sales and ad valorem funds, which is going to help us and continue to get the kind of reports that Monica just said a few moments ago. Also, with growth and development, we have and will continue to have a need for housing, some of those things were addressed tonight. We appreciate those efforts that you guys have made, and of course, those are the developers that are dipping into that, but we'll be continuing to dip ourselves, or dip our toes rather, into the residential market, and we've got a few opportunities to do that moving forward, and we already have announced a few things earlier this year. And then just to get back to the primary job thing, we are working with two industrial clients as well that will provide some high-paying jobs in that arena, so we're excited about what's going to go on there. I'll give you an update in executive session. Other than that, we're currently managing a portfolio, continues to grow. I think when I got here, it was 58 million that we were looking at. We now are over $300 million in projects that we're managing right now. So, that's it.
Yeah, I have a question for Jeff. Just a little bit of trivia for you, put in your pipe. Yesterday, I happened to speak to an attorney who refers to, there's an attorney here in town, he used to work with Racehorse Haynes, mentioned Dallas, Dallas, I thought that was interesting.
That's all you got?
That's all I got.
That's pretty exciting.
It is pretty exciting.
Yeah, thanks.
Don't dance. Thanks, Jeff. All right, we're going to go to the consent agenda.
Are we accept the consent agenda as presented?
Mark makes a motion, we accept the consent agenda as presented. Second? Allen seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, same sign of opposed, all right. That was a little late on that one. All right, consenting items. Comments by city manager.
Mr. Mayor, first of all, I'd like to recognize and thank Dr. Marcy Reynolds for encouraging her government students to participate in our local government. She's got some students here tonight, and Dr. Reynolds is over here. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for allowing us to do it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd also like to... Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd also like to update you on the downtown revitalization grant we've recently been approved for by the Texas Department of Agriculture. To give you some specific information, the grant is for approximately 300,000, just over $290,000. It will create 1,300 linear feet of sidewalk, concrete sidewalk, from Graham Street to Divine Street on Washington. It will also help with street improvements by improving 2,943 linear feet of brick pavement. Those streets are Virginia Street, Mason Street, Green Street, and Columbia Street. We are currently in the planning, development stages at this point, environmental studies will take place in September. We anticipate awarding the contract in December, and to have construction starting sometime in March through May of 2020.
It's a great project.
As we have taken to calling it at the office, it's OPM, other people's money?
Aye.
It is taxpayer money, but it's taxpayer money spread out throughout the United States, not in Stevieville, Texas. The last day to register to vote is Thursday, April 4th. Early voting begins on Monday, April 22nd. We're also taking written citizens' budget requests until the 22nd, those can be emailed to Stacy, you can put them on the, you can enter them on the website as well.
Thank you, Stacy.
We have a special council meeting and council committee meetings on Tuesday, April 23rd, at 5:30 PM. I think we're also planning one for the 25th, for an additional item. Election Day is May 5th, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. The next regularly scheduled council meeting, next regular meeting is May 7th, which is my wife's birthday. And we're going to canvass the vote on May 14th at 5:30, and also have a reception for the new city council members and the outgoing city council member.
Thank you, sir. Mark?
Okay, spring is a busy time of the year, lots of stuff going on, I want to highlight a couple of things. This Saturday will be the kickoff for the farmers' market event that's held over here across the street at the city plaza. That event begins at 9:00. Prior to that, though, you can get up and come down and have coffee with the cars, that will be the, whether it's the Antique Auto Club has their show presentation around the courthouse in the parking lots there. Encourage everybody to come out, both events are, they're outstanding, the guys with cars really like what they do, and we need to get out and support the downtown merchants that put on the farmers' market force, and this is the kickoff event this year. The following Saturday, which is the 13th, an iconic event in Stevieville that's been going on forever, is the Native Airland Plant Fair down at the museum grounds. Great opportunity to go out and visit with friends and neighbors, see some unique stuff down there, and pick up your plants. Then you take those plants home, and you plant them that Saturday afternoon, you take a little nap, then you wake up and you get cleaned up, because the same Saturday night, which will be the 13th, is the first annual, hopefully, tasting on the trail event. There are, I have no idea how, but there are a few tickets left, given the group that my wife has put together for the tastings on the trail, we'll be traveling as a pack down there, I'm sure, but there are a few tickets available yet, online, at the rec hall, or see somebody that you know is associated with keep Stevieville beautiful, this is a joint event. Let's sell it out, let's get all the tickets bought, and I look forward to seeing you all there, Mr. Mayor.
Colonel?
Well, Mark got both my events for the 13th, and I was going to say, but we still have the fish fries going on by the Knights of Columbus, so I encourage you to go to their fish fry Friday night, and Mark got my other things, that's all I have.
Ready?
Sorry.
I've got nothing.
No comments, man.
Allen?
I want to plug SPAR for just a minute, we had the SOX tournament down there, it was well-attended, all I heard was positive about it, I think it ran very well. We've got volleyball coming up, we've got other things that SPAR does, it's one of the best-kept secrets in town, I think, because it is, it's good for our youth, and it's good to advertise our city, and it's good for tourism and other things, because it brings people to our city to see the positive and the good things that we have, and to participate and enjoy the city and the parks, and our Parks Department does an excellent job keeping those facilities nice and operational, and it's not a small task, I assure you, but I wanted to put a plug in for them, and thanks to Jen, and all of the people in her staff that do that. Thank you.
Sherry? Brandon?
Well, I guess it's the SPAR train, but I was going to say, thank you for the SPAR Adopt a Spot, it was a couple of weeks ago, on the 23rd. Jen put together a program that's been spoke about, but an opportunity for individuals or businesses to adopt places throughout our Parks Department to clean up, they shared a lot of pictures, there's a lot of neat areas that were cleaned up, that's going to be an ongoing process. I don't know if there are still spots available, I'm sure we can find you a spot for sure, no?
If there's a spot, we'll let you have it.
If there's a spot, we'll let you have it, but I want to thank all those volunteers that went out as well, and cleaned up those spots, make our parks look beautiful. I actually went to JC Park, which is where my spot is, and I had to call Jen, because I didn't know what I was supposed to do. They'd just been there the day before in mode, there was no trash anywhere, there was no anything, so they do a very good job with that. And then, as far as the election, I think it's cool to see the young students here from Tarleton, and thank you for encouraging them to be involved. Again, it's important to go out and vote, we don't have a whole lot of racist this time, like last time, but I think it's important that you exercise your right to vote, and I appreciate you being involved, so, thank you.
In compliance with the provisions of Texas Open Meetings Law, Subchapter D, Government Code, Verdict, Texas Codes annotated in accordance with Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Project Blue, Project CS, and Project Select, and Project Deco. We'll get into executive session, we'll be back, hang around.